That would have been a car to keep. Oh my god, yes.
You think we're gonna make loyal or did you get something different? Oh, C one, oh my god, that's like.
Oh, oh nice. Those C ones are beautiful. They are beautiful. Okay. You take it out for Cruz?
Of course.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I will call the August 12th, 2025 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. Could we have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier? Mayor Scott?
Here. Alright, we'll move into, uh, public discussion.
My name is Joe Papillion. I own the apartment building at six Woodward Heights. I own the apartment building next door at 131 East Oak Ridge in Ferndale. The house next door at 137 East Oak Ridge and other properties. So I'm really happy to be, property owner in Pleasant Ridge and I appreciate all of you and the good work of the police department. But I have two rich issues to raise with the commission today. One pertains to an email I sent you on July 11th. I don't know if you remember it. It's about a truck leaving the Knox facility that destroyed a bush of my neighbors, Dan Howe, and then fled the scene. And the second is also about Knox, asking the city to be more vigilant in enforcement during the dream cruise that's coming up this week and to avoid problems that I had last year. So let's talk about the first. On July 11th, I witnessed a delivery truck leaving Knox and it backed into my neighbor's driveway in his garage and almost took out a telephone pole. But he was successful in taking out one of the bushes and fled the scene with a bush attached to his truck. I sent an email to you and, and also the, um, police chief in Ferndale and to Dan Howe, who's my neighbor. I received a response from the police chief, Dennis Emmy, asking if this happened in Ferndale. I said, no, it's Pleasant Ridge. And I got a response from Dan Howe, but remarkably, I got no response from any of you. I was kind of surprised. And even more troubling because I copied, uh, Roy Source. You may remember him. He's the one whom you may remember pledged to be a good neighbor. Nothing from him as well. So disappointed, but hopefully Knox will address the issue. The second issue pertains to the really unruly behavior of the Knox customers during last year's Woodward Dream Cruise. It affected my Oak Ridge apartment. The Knox customers were enjoying the fruits of the Knox, um, sales along with alcohol. They were on my property and at Oak Ridge, which is in Ferndale. They were in the alley. There were numerous cars parked illegally and on August 17th, 2024, I sent an email to my good neighbor Roy Source about the troubling incidents during the dream cruise. And yes, I copied all of you. I don't know if you remembered it. Happy to read it if you'd like. I wrote to Roy, while you may view your recent opening in Pleasant Ridge, this is last year as a success, regrettably was a disaster for me. Knox patrons parked in my Oak Ridge apartment lot. For example, I very politely asked a woman who parked her vehicle in my lot to move. She replied with a stream of profanity. She reluctantly moved her vehicle, after which I spoke with her security person, William, who basically was useless. Cars were illegally parked on the Oak Ridge Street next to my apartment and the house I own in clear violation of the no parking. Some of the cars were presumably associated with Knox and I sent photographs with it. Several Knox patrons were enjoying the fruits of your business along with alcohol on my Oak Ridge apartment wall adjacent to the alley. Again, your security did nothing and I sent photos with that. Maybe this calamity was associated with your opening coinciding with the Woodward Dream Cruise, but this cannot and will not continue if this is business as usual. Is this your understanding of being a good neighbor? No response. A week later, August 24th, two Knox customers were smoking marijuana on my property. Again, I sent a letter to Roy Source with a photo and copied all of you. And I wrote, Roy, another hiccup in your commitment of being a good neighbor. The attached photo taken this morning, August 24th, 2024, 9:45 a.m. shows two Knox customers enjoying their weed from your store, but on my property. I asked them politely to leave and eventually they did so. So I did copy all of you. I did get a response from you, Jim, and you said, if you have a problem, call the police and I'll do that in the future. So what I ask from you is to be more vigilant this year. I can't tolerate the Knox customers congregating in the alley on my property, smoking weed, drinking alcohol, parking illegally. I think it's wrong. I think it reflects poorly on the city of Pleasant Ridge and certainly on Ferndale. And I'll take your good advice, Jim. I will call the police. So again, I ask for your support on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you're kind of tired of hearing me.
No, no, not at all.
This Knox stuff. And I've copied him a few times about the dangers of marijuana and, and, but, you know, we, we've made this, you've made the decision, along with a lot of other municipalities, that this is a rainbow of gold that they're looking for. So. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Were there any others? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, this is my colleague Ken and I'm having him film this. Why, you giving me signals? Because I came here in May, as you remember, asking for something simple, a sign of rules governing the use of the state-owned easement behind the community center. The ground was cold then and we were assured the signs were on order. Today, we still have none and the leaves are starting to turn. So I went to the city council archive to draw the exact words from May's meeting. But to my surprise, when I went into the city council archive, curiously, that specific commission hearing was gone. It's the only one missing in the archive dating back five years. So I want you to meet Ken. The situation back there.
I want to address that real quick. We did have our, our equipment burned out that meeting. It was never recorded. I posted on Facebook that night that tonight's meeting is not being broadcast because we had an equipment.
Are there minutes that we can get? Do you remember saying they're on order?
I do.
Okay.
And there are minutes.
Okay, they were on order.
I do, and they're not out, they're not out yet.
As the city decides on its own that it's going to stretch out the community centers, grounds, it's becoming unpleasant, ruinous to peace and safety. The boozing, the shouting, I've told you all this before. Here's a little after dark, after the city-sponsored volleyball championship. I just give you the last 30 seconds because I don't call the police. I just wanted to ask them. Was there a drink? You're not allowed to drink. You just threw them away. You said you drank. The police asked me to rat you out. I'm gonna be cool here. I just want it quiet. The police said, the city council said, call on you. I'm like, I'm not doing that, dude.
Then call them.
I'm not doing that.
Yeah, but it's, it's cool. Call them. I mean, like, you know, if you're doing something illegal, I have no problem.
Well, no, it's like, it's.
We're just doing what the city is telling us we're allowed to do.
Thank you for saying it. Alright, thank you for saying it. City encouraged us to do it. That's their understanding of what's going on. Okay, I'll keep going. City says we could do it. That's why we do it. That's why we want a sign. It's real simple. So we don't have to yell at the neighbors and I don't blame them. Nobody's telling them any different. They think it's okay. So now, the city has put in an offer, as you know, to buy the easement. If I'm reading this map correctly, tell me if I'm wrong, Jim, it's going from Ridge Road all the way to Oakdale? Maybe even more?
It doesn't go all the way from Ridge Road. Uh, we already own the property.
Right, so from the playground all the way to Oakdale, is that correct?
Uh, it's, it starts about five feet west of the east line of the volleyball court.
Yeah, and then all the way to?
Not all the way to Oakdale. Uh, so I think there's a little small strip of land that.
Just a little bit. To be something else.
Yeah.
Just a little bit. Okay, well.
Not all the way to Oakdale.
Okay, almost all the way to Oakdale. That affects 17 families, 17 households, 17 stakeholders in this community. Yet we're told nothing of it. There's no transparency in this process. In fact, here's what the state told the city in April before I even came to you when they're inquiring about purchasing this property. The state, MDOT, the agency, said, I don't think we would continue to allow the property to be used by the city anymore for liability reasons. Liability reasons. Did you know about that? I didn't know about that. I found out about that, but we doubled down and did volleyball championships, daycare. Somebody break their leg, this whole town's in trouble, but we weren't told. So now, that was April. I said nothing. I called no police. I just watched. I like to know who I'm dealing with. I've spoken to most of my neighbors. We are stakeholders. We've been excluded and we want to be heard. The helter-skelter is untenable. We border that land. It directly affects us. In fact, this is from my neighbors. We would like a group of you to discuss with us what's going on with the property, what we need to know, what's the city's view on this, and the city know our view. That's what a community does. So I'm happy to organize the meeting. Uh, this is my number, my address. Who would I give this to? Clerk?
I can take it.
Okay.
Have your.
Thank you.
So, okay, when will I expect to call? My neighbors would like to know. I'm not dragging them here. They don't feel like coming. They want you to come to them. 17 households. This week, get a call, start setting this up.
What's permitting, what's, why wouldn't they come here to, to speak their voice?
Because you haven't told them anything.
If they have questions, we're, this is an open.
Well, how, how about, you know, like, like you do with commissions, you, we start studying it because you're not legally using it. So.
So, hang on.
Okay.
Let's reset.
Let's reset.
It's.
What these facts I just laid out for you.
Sure, it's state-owned property. It's vestigial. They, it was purchased as part of the 696 project. Ended up not being used, so it's landlocked property.
Yes.
Um, this and half of the dog park are the same.
And the community garden.
Yes, half. So the state of Michigan's allowed us to use it as parkland.
They have not allowed you. They were unaware of it. So continue, I'm sorry. We're just getting facts here.
Okay, well, the, uh, cast of characters changes over the years.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so people at the state who were there when that happened. Regardless, it's been used as parkland over the years. We've maintained it. We've operated it. Um, the city has right of first refusal to purchase the property.
That's a legal question. I'm not sure. You might have got yourself in a pickle with that, but that's for another day.
That came straight from MDOT.
Yeah, well, I've got MDOT too, so like I said, it could be for discovery. I don't know. But continue, please.
That's, that's, that's it. That's a sum total. The city commission is aware of all of this. They've been copied on all the emails, so.
And I would also say, just as a matter of procedure, I can't think of a time where the city has purchased property and not had a public hearing. So what you've asked for is probably a little early, meaning if we decided through all of our research to go through with this, we might, we might not, you would have an opportunity to come to a public hearing and hear everything that we know.
Okay, so this is good, but we're now deflecting from when I first came here.
I'm not deflecting at all.
Which is where the posted rules. I leave my house on Tuesdays. Can't work in the day because we've got a gigantic daycare and I have to leave for volleyball. I went to Geary Park. You know what they have there at the gazebo? Giant. These are, this is the noise ordinance. You know what else they have? No alcohol and over, no dogs off the leash. We have none of it. You heard what they said. They think you're letting them do it and disturb the peace. It's not a slam dunk, even for certain. Even my lawyers have read the federal law. It's not right, right of first refusal. You have an opportunity. So I'm asking for, and my neighbors are asking for some coherency, some quiet. Your part of the easement is locked off for safety, not ours. Why? We're stakeholders. We're in this community. You're just doing what you want? You can't just do what you want. That's what the ordinance is for. Or is Mr. Mayor, is that what the city does? Because we are a community. I've come here in a dignified way. I don't want this to end up with hard feelings, headlines, legal fees, but if we're all going to be ignored, you can expect it, I'm quite sure.
Well, there are no hard feelings on our side.
Of course not. You don't live there. Are, are we going to get anything? There's no policing, no light.
So.
No?
Uh, let us take this item back again on, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, um, but I think you've said signs. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, you know, yes, like we have in the other parks.
And you've asked for a public hearing. Is there anything else?
All I asked for was, that's what I asked for. My neighbors would like to meet, just to, to find out what's going on. That's.
Okay.
Not bad. You may have lunch, a coffee.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll expect a call. And thank you for your service.
Alright. Any, anyone else tonight?
Would that fit in rec commission?
I'll stop by during the cruise.
Okay.
Were there any other, uh, items for public discussion? Alright, uh, why don't we go to our liaison reports? Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, Arts Council is moving forward with a lot of the plans, looking at some RF, uh, RFPs for, um, proposal for a couple different specific projects that will be discussed more at the next meeting, you know, meetings as we come up to figure out which exact projects will be next. Um, please feel free to join us on the third Wednesday of the month at 4:30. Uh, we'll be here, uh, um, on August, whatever the third Thursday is. Or Wednesday, I'm sorry, at 4:30 and we will see you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Perry? Public schools.
A little ahead of season. Good evening. I took the summer off, uh, so I missed you all.
We're glad to see you.
But school's starting. Uh, it's two weeks from yesterday. Much to my daughter's chagrin. Uh, we'll be back, uh, at it. So, um, big piece is, um, if you are planning to go to Ferndale Schools, you do need to register online. Um, a number of text messages have been sent out. Um, if you're having problems with that, let me pull up the date really quickly. Um, you can go to, I thought I had this one up, uh, the administrative building, uh, on tomorrow between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. August 14th between 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and August 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And there are people there that are willing, are able to assist you with the registration process, but that is a must to do before the first day of school. Um, next Wednesday, August 20th, is, uh, back to school bash at, um, the high school, at the athletic fields. Um, all sorts of things, uh, from haircuts to supplies, uh, to just celebrating that we're back to school. Um, so it should be a good event. As last year was the first one of these. I remember we do it again this year. Um, and then when school, we had our first committee of the whole for this year last night and our superintendent promised this. Uh, over the last year plus, you probably all have been involved. Strategic planning effort has been done by, uh, uh, our team. Uh, it is done. Uh, it will be rolled out, um, either right before school starts or the first week of school. Um, it'll include, uh, full dashboard on all the metrics and everything that we're going to be putting out there. So, um, really excited to, uh, get this plan out there. So much of the community was involved in developing it. Um, but also being able to start sharing, uh, the progress, uh, because we are, you know, uh, there's lots of challenges. Still don't have a school budget. Uh, we're two weeks out. Uh, and we're hoping to see what, what comes out there, but, um, you know, Ferndale Public Schools last year, one of the few schools in Oakland County that, uh, increased, uh, number of students in it. Um, also passed the bond, also increased scores, uh, ELA, uh, which that trifecta is pretty much, did not happen in Oakland County altogether. Um, we're going to have record, um, enrollment in kindergarten again this year, uh, for like the third straight year. Um, so there's lots, lots of exciting stuff happening. We want to be able to, to continue to share of like everything that's happening here. So, appreciate you all continuing to have us here. Um, I think the other thing, I mean, we talked to superintendent is, you know, making sure that we can get the bond plan. Uh, once we get that in the fall, have her come out here. We also have a new communications director coming on board. Uh, her last job was at NASA, uh, and now she is joining us. Pretty exciting to have her on board. She will be introduced next week. Um, but she'll probably be also reaching out to you all, um, to just as we continue to try and get information out, be a much better partner with, uh, municipalities of different ways that we can get information out through, particularly the Ridgeers, since it's such a great communication tool here in the city.
That's cool.
That'd be great. Yeah, we'd love to have a meeting with her.
Yeah. Uh, any questions I can answer? Alright, thank you all.
Covered it all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with all the budget stuff.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
More finance director.
Yeah.
Doesn't give enough to deal with this nonsense.
Yeah. Good luck.
Um, Commissioner Lenko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, unfortunately, I had a funeral, uh, that conflicted with the meeting, uh, the DDA Planning Commission. So, Jim?
Yep, I was there.
Take it away.
Uh, we discussed the, uh, we had our beginning discussion for the accessory dwelling unit, uh, question with the planning commission, as you know. That was a big focus of the master plan that was recently adopted. And this was the planning commission's first discussion on how we want to tackle that, uh, of implementing the recommendation to allow accessory dwelling units in the community. So we discuss a lot of the issues with ADUs. Many of them are common and addressed by, uh, other communities that have done this. Parking, how many, where, how's it approved? What's it look like? Uh, where can it be located? So all of those questions. We had, we had a good discussion about that. Our next steps are going to be to put together, uh, just a, a first draft ordinance for discussion, um, to start to then, you know, refine our approach with the planning commission. Uh, this is operating in parallel to the, um, short-term rental question. So we know that these two things are going to be progressing simultaneously. Uh, the planning commission will be taking the lead on the ADUs. The city commission will be taking the lead on the short-term rentals. And at some point, we'll reconcile these two. Um, I can't see one being approved without, um, serious consideration of, you know, the other and how they relate to each other. So, uh, our next meeting is scheduled for October and, uh, we will have the draft ordinance to begin to look at and react to at that point with.
Wow.
With the planning commission. Uh, DDA, there was no update. Um, we're, it's kind of status quo at the moment for the DDA.
Those meetings are the fourth Monday of the month. These chambers at 7:00 p.m., right?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
And Commissioner Schmier is not here. I think all that we wanted to talk about was.
The historical house and garden tour.
Yes.
Which will be very lovely. What is the date on that? September, right?
Trying to remember.
I know. Uh, but it'll be exciting. And also they always need more docents, more volunteers to come out and help, you know, in the homes and the gardens and, you know, do things like sell tickets. It's really, uh, it's fun to work in the different houses and stuff because you get to, you know, meet the homeowners more and sort of find out about their process and then share it with other people in the community. And it's, what is that?
September 13th.
Thank you.
It's September 13th, which is a Saturday. And we have some really, it's a really good mix of homes and stuff too and gardens. It should be an interesting day. So come out and yeah, volunteer, send us, send anybody that you know up here or ask these guys if you want to volunteer for the home and garden tour because it's a great, being a docent's a lot of fun, but make sure you go, even if you don't, uh, volunteer for the day.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Few things we have here as the summer winds down. The adult swim is August the 19th from 8:00 to 9:30 at night.
It's next week.
Yeah. Hopefully we have some weather like we have right now for that evening.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Teen swim is August the 21st. That's also from 8:00 to 9:30. And then as a reminder, Labor Day pool hours are 11:00, 8:30. And reminder for this holiday weekend, it's a max of six guests per household that can be used on this specific day. Then the much-awaited dog swim will come after the pool closes. That's Wednesday, September 3rd. Large dogs, which are considered over 55 pounds, they can swim at 5:30 and then the smaller pups at 6:30. So.
That's so cute.
A separate item drop in water aerobics, not for the dogs, is with Colleen on Saturday mornings at 10:00 and the cost is $15 to do that. There are our fall tennis lessons, which will begin on September 3rd at Gainesboro. Both of my girls have done those and they're fun. They're great. Yeah, they have a great time, do a nice job. And you can register online at ifirstserve.net. That's the letter I, firstserve.net. And check out page 10 on the current Ridgeer youth, teen and adult library programs as well. There's a bunch of fun stuff there. And finally, well, two last things here. The Fall Fest in Hayride, which is always a big, fun, successful, be held at Gainesboro from 4:00 to 6:00.
So much fun.
Sunday, October the 5th. So that's coming up quick. Event includes free pumpkins while they last, cider and donuts, food trucks and more. We're a food truck, singular, and more. And then last, summer, this is from Shawnee, the rec director. Summer may not be over, but they would like to thank the hard-working teens and young adults that have shown up day in and day out to ensure that our community has stayed active and engaged this summer. It's really a marvel to go walk in there and see all of the things going on. It's chaos in the best of ways. Fun. The energy is, is amazing. So they'd also like to thank the swim team coaches for their hard work and dedication. Had three dual meet wins, including the first victory over Huntington Woods in 26 years. And then a special thank you to the Synchro Show coaches for putting on the show of the summer, which included a mer moms routine, which was amazing. These above-name groups of people make everything look flawless and easy, but behind the scenes, they're working hard. Late weekend hours that a lot of people don't see. So when you do see them, be sure to give them the thanks for the work and extra work they've provided all summer long.
Yes.
We are truly a blessed community and that's all I have. And thank you, Shawnee. This, it's amazing how much you cram into it.
There's a whole team of people that do it.
Yeah, so it makes, uh, makes this community what it is.
You've built a good team. It's very cool.
Thank you for everybody's support and coming out. We wouldn't be able to do our job if you guys didn't join in the fun. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, the next time we meet will be after Labor Day. It's crazy.
Yeah. Unless our next rec commission meeting will be October the 29th, 7:00 p.m. in the big room.
Cool.
Thank you.
Or no, uh, we meet in the little room, right? Or is it the side room?
They'll be there somewhere.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to governmental reports.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, couldn't make it fairly short tonight. Um, first thing, want to say as of tomorrow, we will be back to fully staffed in the police department. Uh, we have a new officer who hopefully will be here next month. But Officer Farhat has started. Uh, he's new to us, but not new to police work. And Officer Waters, who got injured, uh, back in, mm, February?
February.
Yeah, February. Uh, woman ran a red light going northbound Woodward at Sylvan and, uh, hit him in the police car and totaled the police car. He injured his shoulder. He will be back to work as of tomorrow night. So we will be back to full staff tomorrow.
Good timing.
Yes, thank goodness. It is dream cruise week and, and we, we need both of them. So, um, just wanted to touch on some of the public comments from earlier. We do patrol everywhere, uh, but we cannot deal with an issue if we don't know about the issue at the time. Uh, so for those watching at home, please call us. Uh, it's one of the things that I have said since I got in the door here. Uh, do not feel bad about calling us. That is what we are here for. That is what we are paid to do. Uh, my officers can be out there within a moment, you know? But if we don't know about it, we can't get out there and deal with it at the time.
And I would, I would add on that.
Yes.
It's very frustrating when, on the administration side, when people claim there's a problem, but never report the problem. And then expect that we are going to change something anywhere. And it's some of the issues discussed tonight, but this is a common, common, uh, thread that runs through of, well, I want you to change this for me, but I'm not going to complain about it because I don't want to be a complainer, but I, I want you to change this one thing. And it's very hard. It's very difficult to act on something when you have one complaint or one instance. Um, and then when that's not even verified or there's a record of the police being able to, you know, go and investigate or confirm, deny. So it's, it is very important to call when you have an issue, uh, for the police because it's, it not only helps address the issue, but it helps us with establishing a record of there being an actual problem.
Right.
So I can't stress it enough.
Yeah, um, you are not being kind to your fellow neighbors if you don't call. It's really that simple.
And call immediately.
Even if it's your, if it, even if it's a fellow neighbor, just call. Even if it's, even if it's a fellow neighbor, just call.
Yes.
And then we have a record of it. We can address it in the proper manner. And the time that it takes to make a 30-second video or Facebook post, you could call.
Absolutely.
So just call. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, call in a timely manner. Call as it's happening. We've had numerous things throughout the years where someone said someone's breaking in to the house across the street from me. And we get there, well, where did they go? Which, oh, it happened a week ago. We need to know now. So please call us.
Right.
Makes your job easier as well when you need to know those numbers and you can come to me and I'll look those up and we'll get answers. Other than that, I'm going to let you guys be unless you have any questions. As always, lock your doors. Lock your doors to your car. Lock your doors to your house.
And one person in the turnaround at a time.
One person in the turnaround at a time, unless it's marked.
No promises.
Unless it's marked.
Unless it's marked.
Just a quick one. I know we've been getting calls about noise on Woodward. Any, you've been patrolling, just to make a comment to say?
We have. It's Dream Cruise Week. So someone actually asked and the, we're enforcing as normal up until Wednesday, till tomorrow. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we give a little bit of leeway, but come Sunday, you will see the noise enforcement signs go back out. And we will keep those up for continually for a couple of weeks and we will be enforcing and letting people know Dream Cruise is over. And we'll see you in 2026. So.
Thank you.
All right.
And is there anything else you recommend that, like, that residents sort of look out for or just sort of be prepared for with Dream Cruise this weekend?
We aren't closing down any streets. The only thing that'll be closed is our parking lot. But it's just normal Dream Cruise stuff. Try to find the alternate routes. The big problem is the freeway being closed right now.
Yeah.
For our shutdown this year, unfortunately, we talked to MDOT. MDOT is supposed to open up the both lanes when you turn from northbound Main onto eastbound 10, so that we'll have two lanes to turn. Otherwise, we're funneling three lanes of northbound Woodward traffic, really four lanes, but onto, onto three lanes of Main Street and then onto one lane of 10 Mile. So it'll be opened up to two lanes of 10 Mile.
Yeah, that's right. It's blocked down to one lane.
So all of, all of that traffic, if, if, in case you get stuck in it, you're going to be funneled onto 10 Mile, 10 Mile through Bermuda. You'll be funneled, you can either turn south onto Hilton or you'll be funneled into Hazel Park. So it's going to be frustrating for a lot of people to get caught in that. So we shut down.
What time do they shut it down?
We shut down at 10:00 PM on Friday night and 9:00 PM on Dream Cruise itself. And normally, it's about an hour that we shut it down, clear people out and open it back up. I have a feeling it's going to be a little bit longer this year because it's a lot of traffic getting funneled on. We normally funnel onto 696 eastbound. And now a lot of that traffic's going to be diverted northbound Woodward and they're going to be coming and going on 696 westbound. So you're going to have a lot more southbound traffic turning onto the westbound service drive. And then you have Coolidge exit will be closed and the Coolidge Bridge is closed.
Is the, okay, the Coolidge, but is Scotia open?
I believe Scotia's open at this point, yes. But it, this is going to be an interesting Dream Cruise for sure. It's going to be different than other years. So there's going to be a lot of traffic that's going to, it's going to get slowed down a lot.
Thank you.
If you're planning to go somewhere around town, check your bike pressure, bike tire pressure.
And we start, while we shut down at 9:00, like, we'll shut down Woodward a few minutes early just because of our resources for staffing. We need to get those guys in position, I'm sorry, officers in position at other places. So I don't want to offend Jody.
I'm sure she would not. That's the, be the least of her concerns.
But I'm trying to get better. So.
Chief, what, what does your team do differently to prepare for Dream Cruise weekend versus any other weekend?
Nothing. We're community, we're, everybody's working.
Everybody does.
Yeah. No, no one gets this weekend off.
Gotcha.
There's people more overtime because we have to have people here for shutdown, people in longer hours, people that weren't working this weekend now work this weekend. So all of us are here.
Gotcha.
It's, it's an interesting event because it's still community oriented. You'll see the officers out just walking around, talking to people. You know, that's what we do, but we also need to be available in case something happens. But not only Pleasant Ridge, but all the cities along the Woodward corridor are prepared. The Sheriff's Department is prepared. We have emergency action plans. We have all kinds of resources available. So we, we plan for this all year.
So Friday night is the parade.
Emergency vehicle parade? Yep, 5:30 PM. So they leave westbound, or I'm sorry, east 9 Mile and come northbound on Woodward up to 11 Mile, hit the turnaround just south of 11, then they come back.
They leave Ferndale at 5:30?
5:30.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Cool.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Jim, would you like to give a minute, a discussion on this now or later?
Your, at your pleasure. I can do it now.
Let's do it now.
Okay. Item?
7C.
7C, cash and investments report. We put it in consent this year.
7D.
But I'll just run through real quickly. So this is our fiscal year '25 year-end cash and investment report. It's in the packet, available for review. We have two major centers where our excess funds are invested. First is local government investment pools. This is our fund balance for general fund, water fund, all of our various governmental funds. These are invested in accordance with state of Michigan rules, very safe, very liquid assets. Those are in two main places, my class, which is a local government investment pool and Oakland County Investment Pool. Oakland County invests in longer-term instruments. So they were really trailing the market once invest, once interest rates were, started to increase in 2022. So there, they were still returning less than 1% when the federal funds rate was 5%. So at that time, we moved money to my class, which is in shorter terms, zero to three-month duration products. Shorter term, more, more responsive to current interest rates. So by moving that money over to my class, we were able to get closer to that 5% yield. You can see for fiscal year '23, that was a 1.5% yield return that we saw. And then that jumped to 5% in fiscal year '24. And then fiscal year '25, as they cut rates, that return went down a little bit. But we did return $350,000 roughly in fiscal year '24 and about $370,000 last year in fiscal year '25. So our total return after we moved money over to my class was about $782,000 of return.
Not much change.
Yeah, for money that's in fund balances. The other major center we have is our Parks and Recreation Endowment Fund. This was created in 2015. It allows you to create a fund that's invested under pension fund rules. So here you can invest in the market. We have a 70/30 portfolio at Vanguard. So nothing crazy, just your kind of standard blended stocks and bonds fund. This returned 13.5% last year and it's had an 8.5% average annual return over the, its lifespan. So the ending value is 3.54 million at the end of fiscal year '25. We invested $2 million in the, of this, of SCAF funding in 20, the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year '15. So we've seen 1.8 million total return, withdrawn $300,000 to support projects. The big room renovation, the pool pavilion and the Gainsborough Park Pavilion were all paid for largely with funding from the Endowment Fund with foundation support on all of those projects. And that is the, that's the very brief return or report.
It's a big return. It's a brief report. Thank you. It's really, and it's, it's just exciting for the city to have that resource. Thank you for reinventing the, the way that that's done.
Yeah. And it allows us to do things without using general fund money, tax money.
Right. It allows us to borrow if we need to borrow.
Correct.
All of these things. It just makes it easier having a conversation with someone else and they're like, wow, I can't believe the position Pleasant Ridge is in because we've been good with money so far.
Yes.
Core rating increased too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly.
And you also ended the, we were able to end the Parks and Rec millage.
Yes.
Early.
Yes.
Borrowed from ourselves.
Yeah.
Yep. So that saved each household about $250 over the two years of the reduction in the Gainsborough Park Millage.
Ralph Castale, our former mayor, sits on our investment committee. He's actually celebrating his 40th year of service to the city this year. So shout out to Ralph. Thank you for your help with this and good deal.
Yes. Any questions?
Just a comment. It's interesting, think of the next eight to 10 years as that 3.5, is that typically the worst 30-year span of the market is 8% return over the entirety of the market? So if that doubles again in eight to 10 years, that's 7 million bucks and just how that leverages and really, that's when the interest really starts to, to spool up, which is...
Yes. That's always been my vision for it is to try to, you know, use it for some projects now, but largely, let's grow this thing so that 50 years from now, you know, let's, it's like planting a tree.
Yeah.
And, you know, there should be a lot of shade 50 years from now from this.
A little bit of pruning.
Layer of insulation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
I think we need a motion.
One question. Yeah, actually, I didn't have a question down. So as that grows, if I recall, it's, it only can be used for parks. What happens if we can't spend that down? What else could it, what do, what do you do at that point if it gets to some nets?
Yes. So at that point, then it could handle Parks and Recreation Department operations.
Okay.
I mean, our total, Parks and Recreation after the police is our largest single cost center for the city. So there's, you know, this, as it grows.
Yeah.
It could end up in a sustainable way, you know, withdrawing 3% a year maybe from it, supporting our entire Parks and Rec operation. And then, you know, then that would free up funding, they reduce taxes or address other problems that we have in the city. So, you know, we're not there yet. A 3% withdrawal wouldn't move the needle much now, but, you know.
When you have 10 million there.
Right. As we look to the future, that could be one way of using it. So at that point, it becomes a, a self-sustaining funding mechanism for our number two cost center.
And then what do you do? That's great, you know. So is the pool considered part of the parks?
Absolutely.
So, you know.
There you go.
Just thinking.
Water slide.
Yeah, long-term.
We need more than a 10 million, we need more than a 10 million value to have a pool.
Right, right.
Maybe we get to 20.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, let's get a motion.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Any other comments? And we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And we'll move on to the Oakland County assessing contract.
Yes. We discussed this in June when we did the two-month extension to their current contract. As you're aware, and some of those watching at home may be aware, Oakland County is in the middle of, I'm not sure what right now, but they voted, the Board of Commissioners voted to essentially almost double the rates that they were charging their local communities for assessing services. For us, that equates from a increase of $22,206 for assessing services this year to $42,556 for fiscal year '26. So that's nearly double. It's a $20,000 increase. It's, you know, it's annoying, but it's not prohibitive in our overall budget. So given the fact that many of the communities that are leaving Oakland County for assessing services, they're larger communities where, you know, the numbers are a little, little larger for their cost increase. There's two main firms that these other communities are going to, private, private contractors who do assessing services. And there's really only two of them. So I, I don't know the quality of service that these other communities will get with such a large increase in one year. So it's prudent to remain with the county who's always provided great service. The assessing staff is wonderful. We've had nothing but, nothing but good service and professional help from them for assessing services. So our recommendation is to renew the contract at the new rate. We can exit the contract with 90 days' notice. So if we decide that, you know, it would benefit us in the future to look at moving to a private contractor for this, we can. Even with the move to private contractors, many communities are seeing 15 to 20% cost increases. So it's not like there's an equivalent cost option out there. So for us, let's, my recommendation would be to approve the new contract. Wait and see how things shake out, both at the county and with the private contractors, and we'll go from there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this issue.
Any comments?
Yeah, comment. I, I do like the wait and see approach, letting the other eight communities test the water. It does make sense, considering the impact that this could potentially have. And as you said, Jim, it's a $20,000 increase. It's not prohibitive. It's not great. It's also, we have the 90-day clause to back out. So we have an exit strategy. That feels good. And yeah, I think it's too important to make a hasty move. So I'll be curious. I like the least invasive watch and wait a little bit and then reassess again. Makes sense.
I don't love the automatic increases. Like, I don't know what warrants that, but I don't see leaving them as, I don't know. Yeah, that is a little too risky as far as the cost goes, in my opinion.
You mean their cost smoothing?
It's great. And then I, I just want to put out another risk that I imagine too, for those that went to the private option. Is that like, because it all registers at the county eventually, like, could they raise fees on these private contractors or something like that? I, you know, yeah, staying with them seems like the safest bet at this time. It seems really lopsided and not at all cool how they operated through, and I know, yeah, I'm not saying anything new.
You bring up a good point about it registering at the county eventually. We were talking with our assessor today and they're talking about at the county how they have, they may have to increase their equalization staff. Because now, when they get all of the work from these private contractors, the county has to take that and put it into their equalization. And then they have to check the work. So now the county is not getting paid to do that, to do the work that they're already doing anyways.
Right.
So I don't know, I don't know what the county is doing right now, quite frankly. I'll say it in public. Get your act together.
Yeah, you pay me to it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Perry?
So are they able to retain, like, the quality staff that they've had? Because I was sort of thinking of that too.
That's one of, that's one of the, you know, we like our assessor. We like Melissa. And we'll be very interested to see, you know, what happens with our assigned assessing staff.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that we'll be waiting and, and learning how that goes over the course of this year. And that could be a, you know, what happens with the county staffing could be a very important factor in our decision about what to do next year.
You're right. Their, their goal in correcting what they saw as a budget issue has completely backfired.
Yes.
So, yeah, I, and you could, and sadly, you could see it happening. Like, I could, you could just predict that this would happen had they thought about this as serious business. So it's strange.
Then they got stubborn when they saw that this was not going.
And then it personalities and, yeah, and then it became a Netflix special. So it's, it's really sad. But I, you know, going back to the staff that are there now, they are the gold standard. And I would be uncomfortable leaving the gold standard without reason. So the message to Oakland County is that we'll be very vigilant on being certain that we're receiving that gold standard service for this extra money or for any money, really, because that's, that's something that you, that you do well. Please keep doing it well.
And I've spoken with some of the other communities who are staying with the county and they're all of the same mind. We're going to renew for this year. You know, we don't want to rush into anything, but we're all watching.
It is absolutely bizarre to me that the county would throw caution to the wind on property value. It's, right. I can't roll my eyes enough. But that's, that's what happened. So we're going to protect ourselves by going with what we think is probably the best service, but keep a cautious eye. Or we're about to vote on that.
Thank you for engaging in that and, you know, trying to put, make sure that our voice is heard up there too, in Lansing or in Oakland, Pontiac.
Which unfortunately is no different than Lansing now.
Too bad.
All right, could we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the 2025 to 2028 assessing services contract with Oakland County.
Second.
Hey, we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yeah.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Onto City Manager Report. We need a light topic.
Yeah.
It's August. Give us something light.
Ah, man, Oakdale is wrapping up there. Uh, sprinkler restoration is being done. Seed should be put down in the next few days. We still have the connection to make at Ten Mile, so that's going to drag out for a little ways, but that'll be good to have behind us. Dream Cruises this weekend. So I don't know. That's it. We're just putting a bow on all of this year's, this year's sprint through the summer.
It's been fast. It's been sadly fast.
Yeah. Thanks to this, everyone working in the city for what I know was not an easy summer. And it's not even done yet, but it's just been a summer.
Hot.
I think maybe it's the heat, the Canadian smoke, something just made this.
All of it.
Made this interesting summer. So thank you. Yeah, power outages.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about anything happening around town?
Is this other business?
It can be.
Can be.
All right, cool. Let's move on to other business.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to circle back on both Joe and Charlie. Just for Joe specifically, like, I guess what the expectation of communication. I'm kind of disappointed in the Knox folks for not, I guess, living up to the, because they were sending us emails about the murals and, you know, it's like, uh, I don't know, serving our neighbors, I think, for Knox or attending to the needs, especially when there's damage to their property and such. Like, so like, um, without stepping on anybody's toes, like, what should that communication look like? And like, how do we lean on Knox when something like this happens?
Well, I will say that, that after that email, both our police department and Ferndale's Police Department were involved. They, they did assess the situation.
Was a result?
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting on these, because it is a police matter, there are just things we don't talk about sometimes, but maybe we can.
So we did get the email. We did look into it. That email was coming from a third party that's reporting a possible crime. Some police departments wouldn't deal with that. We do. We went out. Lieutenant Tyler has tried to get in contact with the person about the bush. It was a small bush numerous times. I actually text him during, while this was going on, and he still has not been able to get in contact with the actual person that may be a victim of, it's either a crime or a civil matter. It's more likely a civil matter than a crime. We've had issues there. We've dealt with them. We document them. We have them. We have the retainer wall that we're still dealing with them about. There was a issue with the signage that the police department got involved in, and we dealt with that numerous times. Numerous tickets were written to them. As far as the, the bush issue, when I talked to someone at Knox, they said, oh, we know about it. We know that he ran it over, and we're dealing with it in, with it internally, to which I said, oh, well, I'm going to deal with it externally. So it is an ongoing thing. Lieutenant Tyler, we're dealing with staffing issues and him going over there and not getting, you know, answers yet, but it, it isn't a dead issue. We have been dealing with it. But that's where we're at with that.
Thank you very much.
Again, nobody called the police.
Right.
Right.
We just got an email.
Yes.
From a second party.
Later.
With claims that, yeah, so.
It's helpful.
Yes.
And then Charlie's matters, just synthesizing what I said, and if I missed something, correct me, but like, so it sounds like the signs are like on the list of stuff that have yet to be ordered, but they'll be ordered.
They are, yeah. We need to replace the Gainesboro Park signs as well. They're just old and getting weathered. So we're just looking at doing an overall.
Okay.
Uh, we were short-staffed at City Hall all summer. We were down a person. So that's just been one of those things. It's definitely been on the list. It's going to get done. Just we're working on it. And it's right in the middle of camp season and everything else for the rec department. So, yes.
Okay. And as far as like the property sale and that discussion, I mean, I, I don't recall receiving many emails unless I missed something. Like, as far as like the liability goes and like, that seems new to me.
I don't know exactly what those claims are.
Yeah.
Uh, there haven't been on my side that many emails. The MDOT became aware of, I guess this, the current, people at Oakland County TSC became aware of this when they were contacted about it.
Correct.
And then there was a brief set of emails. It lay dormant for a month or two. And then I think, I think Charlie Leduff applied to buy that property from MDOT.
Yeah.
At which time, MDOT's process is to offer the city the first right to buy the property.
Gotcha.
So if we don't, then the question becomes, I guess Charlie owns the land behind everybody's homes. So I don't know. The, the, I guess we're kind of doing a status quo where it's been used as park for decades. And by buying the property, we would just, you know, then own the land instead of using MDOT easement. So I don't know, you know, it hasn't really come up of, of engaging the neighbors because really what we're doing is no change to the current situation. The other.
And we're talking about the park space that's behind the community center that's used for the, part of that, that's been used for like the day camp and.
Yes. It's, it's basically, it's basically the, the volleyball court west.
Okay.
Is the MDOT property. From the volleyball court east to the building we already own.
Yeah.
Was Charlie proposing to buy the whole thing or just the slice behind his house?
No, the whole thing. The whole thing.
Okay. Got it.
Yes. Yeah.
And then like, are we prepared to buy? I guess maybe we don't need to talk about that.
So the process, the process, as I sent, is it's going to be a long time because the process has started. Now MDOT goes back, that this request has been filed with them, and then they look at it and they assign a dollar value to the property. And then once they have their dollar value, then they say, then they come to us and.
So we're waiting, because I haven't seen a figure yet.
Neither have I.
Okay.
So this could be sometime. I mean, this could be next year before we get anything back from MDOT. When that happens, then that comes before you formally to purchase the property.
Okay.
So in the meantime.
I mean, like, it was always used as a park for at least forty years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I mean, you engaged with MDOT on those, all those parks, all, over the years. I mean, I remember bricks falling off and all those things, and you're trying to get MDOT to maintain them, and they don't want to do that.
Right. We've maintained the walls.
Yeah.
At our cost.
Right.
At least our side of the wall.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Uh, so that's, yeah, yes. And that was, you know, the question, I don't know about liability. I don't know about that because that's not a question that's come up. You know, we have insurance, so. But we'll see what kind of legal questions we have to contend with once those are known. But in the meantime.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah. In the meantime, it's.
Great conversation.
Right. And in the meantime, it's, you know, that's, that's, I don't know what MDOT would say about that. I don't know what MDOT is saying about that. I don't know what the questions being asked of MDOT are. But I do know that we're in the process to buy the property.
Okay. So maybe once we get a figure back, we could do a session with at least that side of Woodside or open it up to everybody, kind of a thing?
Yeah, it gets a little more complicated because if we buy the property, then the, in order to sell it to the homeowners, if that was one of the, you know, questions, that requires a vote of the people that had to go on a ballot. You know, if it's, I, so I don't know. I don't know what the questions are because it, we patrol the park back there. The police haven't seen, we've heard some claims about maybe, you know, homeless people living in the bushes or something. We've, the police have looked at it. There's no evidence of it. You know, we, we've seen, we've had that ten years ago. We know what the signs look like. There's, there's nothing that they found. So I guess the question is, are we looking to do something different than we always have with that property? I don't know. And again, it's, it's one complaint we received. I don't have any other data points on this, so.
Yeah, I've spoken with some of the other neighbors back there who actually are the people who will go, they go back and play after dinner. It's like their backyard type thing. And like a bunch of the neighbors go back there and the kids get on the playground and play.
Yeah, growing up, my, one of my best friends lived next door to what is Charlie's house today. And, yeah, I remember they had a gate that went to the back and.
Did they?
Play on the playground.
Mm-hmm.
Baseball back there.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
More to follow.
Yes. At this point, we have no plans other than waiting for MDOT's number.
Gotcha. Next up, and then, so signs and wait for MDOT's number.
Yes.
Thank you. Any idea on the timeline for signs now that we're wrapping down some of the big stuff?
I mean, they should be in by, I don't know, the fall. We'll get them in this year.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think that followed up on the two things he had.
Yeah. And if you do see something back there that's disturbing, you call the police and they can come in there and document that there's actually something happening or stop it.
Right. And I, I can't stress this enough. We get the police log every day for what the calls for service were the previous day. So that's a very important data point for what, just what's happening and, you know, what's going on and.
But just playing devil's advocate, though, on the volleyball league, that like, I, I mean, like, you're going to call, like, when there's people, like, I don't know, that just doesn't feel cool, right? Like, that, it just, I don't know.
If it's upsetting you.
I get his instinct not like, when there's rec staff and people are having a good time, like, you're just kind of, you're going to be cool about it, but you can still, I don't know.
But if, if you're, if you're worried about it for some reason, just call to remove all doubt.
Right.
Remove the doubt.
Exactly.
And then you can save a Tuesday evening.
And our police are, they, yeah, they've, they've got a, what is it, good bedside manner, like.
Exactly. Just check out the situation.
Whatever the police.
He knows for that.
Exactly.
Right.
We also have body cams that document exactly what we're seeing while we're out there as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? Yes.
Yeah, there's those situations everywhere. It's like sort of with the ADU situation, things like that. If people are having an issue with the neighbor, it's like you have to sort of, you must let someone know. And it, if, it's, it's okay to call the police. This is what, you know, we have the non-emergency number, so you don't have to call nine-one-one. It's calling, what is it, two-four-eight, five-four-one, two-nine-zero-zero, and then hit one. And that takes you to the dispatch after hours or to just here?
Yeah. And it's cliche.
Probably twenty-nine-hundred.
It's, it's.
Just call it yesterday.
It's cliche, but, you know, if there's an issue going on, on your street and your neighbors really are in favor of it, get a petition together. Because it's very difficult to act on one complaint. We often have residents who are very passionate about one issue and expect policy change or change in how things work. But without, you know, it's hard to act on every one person's desires.
Yeah.
And we've heard a lot of people claim to speak for a large group of people, but without, you know, without evidence of that. So get a petition. Get your neighbors to sign something. We've always responded to those. Woodward Heights is where it is today, you know, for better or for worse, and however, you know, people feel about how that process played out. It was a process that played out. We spent a lot of time and money, and it was all because there was a petition filed by Woodward Heights. And Sylvan has parking on both sides of the street now because of a petition that was filed on that street.
For safety and.
Right. And, you know, we, we implemented two-sided parking after we met with them to respond to that petition. So it is a process. So demonstrate, demonstrate that there actually is wider support for, you know, what you're asking us to do, and we'll respond. But coming here and, you know, claiming one thing because, you know, people wanted to, we've had residents who wanted to ban all pit bulls in the city and claimed that they spoke for many people, but they didn't. You know, it was an issue that they had, and it's not to say that it's an unfounded issue, but it's hard to act on one. And I'm just airing frustrations at this point for, you know.
I remember that one. We studied it and other dogs bite at a greater rate, right? Or at the same rate anyway?
Right. Right. So, yeah, it's a, there's ways to get action on these things.
Yeah.
I think we're ready to adjourn. Any other, any other, other business? Sorry, I missed one.
Porch concerts?
Porch, yes, porch.
Yeah, the porch concerts will be Saturday, uh, yeah, Saturday, August twenty-third. It starts at, I forget, I think it's noon, noon or one, and they're all over the city. You'll see some signs. There are QR codes on the signs. We'll put it out on social media, and there'll be some signs around town in a couple of the businesses that are helping support this. But it really is, it's a great unofficial day. It's a really nice way to sort of just hang out in the hood.
The after-party is wonderful.
Marching band.
Right?
It's for a marching band, right?
Oh, yep. It's supporting the Ferndale High School, the marching band. It's like, they'll have donations, places, you can give donations at each of the homes. And I think the homes like to compete for how many donations they get. So it should be, it's, you know, nothing better than supporting music with kids so that someday they'll be playing on someone's front porch. Also, the Women's Club is starting their new year for membership. So if you, if anyone's interested in joining the Women's Club, please reach out. You can reach me at aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org. You could, there is an application online, and I'm happy to send it out. But it is a wonderful way just for, to, to meet, like, more of your neighbors, all ages and everyone are involved. And we do a lot of philanthropic work. We do a lot of fundraising for scholarships for, that's our main thing for kids who live in our school district area. It doesn't matter what school they go to. But it, it, we do a lot of great fundraising through very goofy fun trivia nights and stuff, too. So the Women's Club is a great one to keep, you know, we work hard to keep it strong. And there are lots of great events to bring it, bringing people together. And that's all I have. And then that Friday night, was it the police, the emergency vehicle parade?
Yeah.
Five-thirty P.M.
Five-thirty Friday.
It kicks off at Nine Mile at five-thirty?
Yep. They're all parked down East Nine Mile.
A ribbon cutting and.
You're going to ride.
Like five forty-five.
APR. Well, just be outside at five-thirty.
Maybe there.
Yeah.
Cool.
That's in both ways. It's cool.
Yeah.
Kids love it.
Yeah.
I love it.
And stay off the medians.
Oh, no doubt.
Please stay off the medians.
And, yeah, bring earplugs for the kids.
Between Ellen Poplar, you can see it, you know, really well. Because it stays above, it doesn't go below, right?
From City Hall, it's a, it's a.